in today's sitting. The court meets this afternoon to hear the first round of oral argument of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana on the preliminary objections raised by the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. I shall now give the floor to the agent of Guyana, his honourable Carl B Greenwich. You have the floor, your excellency.
Madam President, distinguished members of the court, it is a privilege to appear before you on behalf of Guyana. If I may, I would like to begin today by expressing Guyana's sincerest congratulations to Judge Caldera Brant, a skion of our good neighbour Brazil for his election to the court to complete the term of one of its most distinguished and accomplished members, the late Judge Antonio Consado Trinidad, whose loss we mourn and greatly regret. We take solace in our confidence that Judge Caldera Brant will capably and admirably fill his illustrious predecessor's very large shoes, and we wish him every success in this endeavour. I would also like to salute the distinguished judges ad hoc, Judge Kuver and Judge Wolfram, for their appointment to the court. For the purposes of this case, it is an honour for me and for Guyana to appear before all of you. This is the second time that Guyana has had the honour of addressing the world court. On the last occasion, in June 2020, Guyana had the distinction of being the first state to address the court remotely by video link, as the court helpfully adapted its established processes and broke new ground in seeking to ensure the timely delivery of justice and the rule of law in the face of the significant challenges and disruption wrought by the Covid-2019 pandemic. Although the format of that hearing was novel, the substance and outcome of the proceedings were not. After affording both parties an equal and fulsome opportunity to present their arguments concerning the court's jurisdiction over Guyana's claims, the court proceeded to deliver a judgment which inscribed itself firmly in its longstanding jurisprudence. Over the course of 138 detailed paragraphs, the court meticulously described, examined and appraised the arguments and issues and adopted a thorough and impartial assessment of the law and facts. In its judgment, which is binding and dispositive, the court reached the unqualified conclusion that it has jurisdiction in respect of Guyana's claim concerning the validity of the 1899 arbitral award and the related question of the definitive settlement of the land boundary dispute between Guyana and Venezuela. In reaching that decision, the court upheld another careful and independent decision, namely the decision of the Secretary-General of the United Nations in 2018 to entrust the court with responsibility for resolving the dispute between Guyana and Venezuela regarding the validity of the 1899 award and the settlement of the parties' land boundary dispute. As the court will be well aware, this is a longstanding dispute, which has stubbornly defied resolution for more than half a century. It has cast a long and menacing shadow over Guyana's security and development throughout its existence as a sovereign state, a shadow rooted in Venezuela's efforts to erase the longstanding land boundary between our two countries and lay claim to nearly three-quarters of Guyana's land territory. The resolution of this dispute is therefore no less than existential for Guyana. Much, of course, has happened in the world in the two and a half years since Guyana first appeared before this court. In addition to the immense suffering caused by the global public health emergency, the spectre and tragic reality of armed conflict is present in many corners of the globe. Recent global events demonstrate the ascendancy of might over right in some regions, an ascendancy which presents a grave danger to international peace and security. No corner of the globe is immune to the consequences and threats which they pose, not least for the very idea of the rule of law. Against that backdrop, the importance of international law as the very bedrock of international peace and security has never been more profound, and nowhere is that importance more profoundly apparent and appreciated than here, in the Great Hall of Justice at the Peace Palace, the very fount and epicentre of international justice. It is therefore a great privilege for Guyana's delegation to be present at the Great Hall today, and it is a particular privilege for me to address you in person at the start of Guyana's first round of presentations. As Guyana explained on the previous occasion when it appeared before the court, since its emergence as a sovereign state in 1966, Guyana has been steadfast in its commitment to international law as the foundation for its relations with its neighbouring states. Madam President, members of the court, it is on this basis that Guyana has brought its claims before the court. It is important to be clear that Guyana brings those claims in the spirit of amity, not enmity towards Venezuela. Guyana desires a relationship characterised by mutual respect, good neighbourliness and peaceful coexistence with its sister South American state. Guyana filed its application in the conviction, which was evidently shared by the Secretary-General of the UN, that a final judgment by the court on the merits of Guyana's claims will provide the surest and firmest foundation for such relations to flourish. Following the Secretary-General's decision to refer the matter to the court in January 2018 and following the filing of Guyana's claims on the 29th of March 2018, Guyana hoped that Venezuela would engage constructively in the proceedings in order to facilitate the fair and timely resolution of the dispute by the court. Regrettably, Venezuela chose not to do so. Venezuela chose not to file a formal written pleading, although it did submit a lengthy written memorandum some seven months after the deadline set by the court for the filing of the Congo memorial, and chose not to participate in the oral hearing in June 2020. Now, more than two years later, Venezuela has decided to participate formally in the proceedings before the court. Guyana welcomes that decision. It regrets, however, that Venezuela's formal participation takes the form of belated preliminary objections which seek to prevent and will inevitably delay the determination of the merits of Guyana's claims, and it regrets too the recent submission just one week before the hearing of a raft of new documents, the vast majority of which have nothing to do with the preliminary objections newly raised. Although Guyana seeks to prevent, oh sorry, although Venezuela seeks to prevent the court from determining Guyana's claims, and although it does so at a belated stage in this regard of the court's procedural order of 2018, it is important to recognise the extent to which Venezuela has now availed itself of the opportunity to participate formally in the proceedings before the court. Guyana notes that Venezuela has appointed a distinguished judge ad hoc. Venezuela also instructed distinguished and respected international counsel, who have presented Venezuela's arguments at this hearing. Guyana welcomes these developments, in particular the presence of Venezuela's substantial delegation in this courtroom today. Most significantly, although Venezuela seeks to challenge the court's exercise of jurisdiction over Guyana's claims, by its participation in these proceedings, it is apparent that it accepts the legitimacy of the court's role, its power to dispense justice and the binding effect of the court's orders and judgments. If, as Guyana expects, the court rejects Venezuela's preliminary objections, Guyana looks forward to Venezuela's continued active engagement at the resumed merits phase of these proceedings. Madam President, as the court has seen, the essence of Venezuela's preliminary objection is that the court should not exercise the jurisdiction to entertain Guyana's claims. It has already conclusively determined it enjoys. Guyana will demonstrate today that Venezuela's preliminary objections are both legally unsupportable and entirely without foundation. The preliminary objections appear to be a device intended to derail and delay the court's determination of the merits of Guyana's claims. This is rather apparent from the surprising nature of Venezuela's argument. As the court well knows, Venezuela is a sovereign state which has been a longstanding and vigorous critic of the consequences of imperial conquest and colonisation of the South American continent. Notwithstanding its previous positions, Venezuela now comes to the International Court to contend that a dispute between two sovereign South American states concerning delimitation of a land boundary in South America is, in its very essence, a dispute about the continuing legal rights and obligations of a former European power, a former colonial power moreover, which unconditionally relinquished any claim to the territory in question nearly 60 years ago, which has never subsequently asserted any claim, right or legal interest in respect of that territory or the arbitrary award which determined its boundaries, and which has expressly welcomed and supported the court's decision to exercise jurisdiction over Guyana's claims. Despite this, you heard Venezuela yesterday make a startling appeal to the need to protect the dignity of that former imperial power by refusing to exercise jurisdiction over a claim brought by its former imperial possession, Guyana. Against this background, Madam President, Guyana expresses its gratitude to the court for the speed and efficiency which it has arranged this hearing on Venezuela's preliminary objections and for setting a timetable which accommodated the needs of Guyana and its council. Throughout these proceedings, Guyana and its people continue to have every confidence that the court will determine Venezuela's preliminary objections fairly, impartially and expeditiously, and will vindicate the Secretary-General's decision to entrust the resolution of the party's longstanding dispute to the court. Madam President, members of the court, with that introduction, I can proceed to outline the presentations from Guyana's counsel, which will comprise Guyana's first round. They are as follows. Professor Pierre D'Argent will begin by explaining that Venezuela's belated preliminary objections are procedurally improper and therefore inadmissible in light of the court's order of 19th June 2018 and Rule 79B of the Rules of Court. Ms Christina B Harry will then demonstrate that Venezuela's preliminary objections conflict with the judgment of 18 December 2020, which is res judicata, and to uphold those objections would be contrary to the statute. Mr Paul Reichler will then turn to the merits of Venezuela's preliminary objections. He will address the legal standard under the monetary gold line of cases. He will demonstrate that the UK is not an indispensable third party to these proceedings under the standard first articulated in the monetary gold case. The UK, he will demonstrate, has no legal interests that will be affected by the court's judgment, let alone the legal interest that would constitute the very subject matter of the dispute between the parties. Professor Philip Sands will close Guyana's first round of oral submission by responding to some of the specific allegations you heard yesterday regarding the invalidity of the 1899 arbitral award. He will show that neither the 1966 Geneva Agreement nor the Good Offices Process conducted by the Secretary-General resulted in any legal interests of the UK that could conceivably be affected by a judgment on the merits of the case. He will also explain why Venezuela's preliminary objections are inconsistent with the 1966 agreement and the conduct of the parties and the UK in the decades since Guyana attained independence. He will show that there is no basis for the court to decline to exercise its jurisdiction over Guyana's claims, and that for these reasons Venezuela's preliminary objections are bound to fail. I thank you, Madam President and honourable members of the court, for your kind attention, and I thank you for now calling Professor D'Argent to the podium.
I thank the agent of Guyana for his statement, and I now invite Professor Pierre D'Argent to take the floor. You have the floor, Professor.
Madam President, members of the court, it's always an honour to address this court, and it is a special honour to do so this afternoon to represent the Cooperative Republic of Guyana. In response to Professor Zimmerman, it is for me to set out certain procedural reasons that make Venezuela's preliminary objections inadmissible. As you have heard yesterday, Venezuela's argument is very simple, according to it, the objection based on the monetary gold principle would not fall within the provision of the 19th of June 2018 order because such an objection would concern the admissibility of the application, whereas the order referred only to the question of the court's jurisdiction. Madam President, the order of 19th of June 2018 was issued due to the fact that Venezuela had informed the court that, according to it, the court did not have jurisdiction to hear the case, and therefore it had decided not to take part in the proceedings. After having recalled these facts, the key recitals and the operative part of the order reads as follows, and it is on your screen. Whereas the court considers pursuant to Article 79, paragraph 2 of its rules that in the circumstances of the case, it must resolve first of all the question of the court's jurisdiction, and that this question should accordingly be separately determined before any proceedings on the merits. Whereas it is necessary for the court to be informed of all of the legal and factual grounds on which the parties rely in the matter of its jurisdiction, decides that the written pleadings shall first be addressed to the question of the jurisdiction of the court. The question for you to decide is whether the objection based on the monetary gold principle, which is the subject matter of the current proceedings and as presented in the specific context of this case, if this objection is admissible at this stage of the proceedings, or whether, as Guyana asserts, Venezuela should have raised this argument within the time limit set by the order so that it was no longer entitled to do so by way of preliminary objections on 7th of June 2022. Respected members of the court, to answer this question, it is necessary to consider three things. On the one hand, one must look at the terms of the order of 19th of June 2018 in order to circumscribe its scope with respect to the particular context of this case. On the other hand, it is necessary to identify the raison d'etre and the legal effect of an objection based on the monetary gold principle when such an objection is upheld. And finally, it is necessary to determine the effect of the order of 19th of June 2018 in relation to the general system of incidental proceedings related to preliminary objections. First, the terms of the order. You ask the parties to inform the court of all of the legal and factual grounds on which the parties rely in the matter of its jurisdiction. The question of the jurisdiction of the court, in English, the question of the jurisdiction of the court that the parties had to address in their initial written pleadings was to be dealt with exhaustively because you expected them to inform you of all the legal and factual grounds concerning your jurisdiction. Therefore, it wasn't a question of permitting the parties to retain any ground of factual law in the matter of your jurisdiction. The words "in the matter of its jurisdiction", "in the matter of its jurisdiction", these words encompass not only the existence of this jurisdiction but also its exercise. Indeed, nothing in the order distinguishes between these two aspects, and both concern your jurisdiction. "In the matter of its jurisdiction" are broad terms, all-encompassing terms, covering every possible limitation to the court's jurisdiction when it comes to the claims contained in Guyana's application instituting proceedings. Madam President, furthermore, it is fundamental to recall that the question of the court's jurisdiction covered by the order arose on the basis of the only jurisdiction invoked by Guyana, namely Article IV of the Geneva Agreement of 1966. However, the United Kingdom had consented to this provision as a party to the agreement. There was no mention of this in yesterday's pleadings. There was no mention of Article IV of the Geneva Agreement. There was no mention of the fact that, as a party to the agreement, the United Kingdom had thus formally consented to the question of the validity of the award, and that this question should ultimately be decided by the court without it participating in the proceedings, and even if its past conduct were to be criticised on this occasion. Venezuela didn't mention anything about this. This is, however, a fundamental point in order to examine the preliminary objection and to understand that it is an abstract, artificial and belated fabrication with no basis or no meaning when it comes to the specificities of this case. This point is indeed essential, and Mr Reichler and Professor Sands will come back to it. Now, for the purposes of the question before me, this reminder will help us to understand that the question of the jurisdiction of the court within the meaning of the order thus necessarily encompass the question that is at the heart of the alleged preliminary objection based on the monetary gold principle, which is that of the UK's consent to the court's jurisdiction to settle the dispute concerning the validity of the award. And this question falls within the scope of Article IV of the Geneva Agreement, to which the UK is a party, and which thus falls within the question of the jurisdiction of the court within the meaning of the order. There was no need, therefore, for the court to ask the parties to present their grounds of fact and of law relative to admissibility for the current objection to be covered. Therefore, the contrast presented by Professor Zimmerman between the 2018 order and other orders issued under Article 79 of the Rules in other cases is irrelevant. Let me now come to my second point. Madam President, members of the court, Guyana recognises, of course, that there exists, as Professor Zimmerman recalled, a distinction between objection to jurisdiction and objection to admissibility. Guyana is equally aware that when an objection based on the monetary gold principle is upheld, it results in the court not exercising the jurisdiction that it indeed has. As such, such an objection resembles an objection to admissibility, but it is not strictly speaking one, and certainly not in the specific context of this case. In pointing out forcefully the points of law that I just recalled, Professor Zimmerman overlooked some elements that are indeed essential to determine if Venezuela's objection should have been raised in accordance with the 2018 order. And before mentioning these elements that were omitted by my colleague, let me recall that, as the court has had the occasion to emphasise, it is not bound by the characterisation given to a preliminary objection by the party raising it. I would further like to emphasise that contrary to what Venezuela and its councils assert, the objection inferred from the monetary gold principle does not affect admissibility of the application instituting proceedings. As such, my colleagues were very general and very imprecise in this respect, and they are mistaken because the monetary gold principle relates to the claims made in the application and not to the application itself. And in the words of the court in the Nauru case, "The court can rule on adjudicating upon the claims submitted to it, provided that the legal interests of the third state, which may possibly be affected, do not form the very subject matter of the decision that is applied for." Similarly, in the case that gave its name to the monetary gold principle, the court declined to, and I quote, "to adjudicate upon the first submission in the application of the Italian government", end of quote. And in the East Timor case, the court emphasised that Indonesia's rights were, and I quote, "the very subject matter of the decision requested by Portugal". The monetary gold principle therefore does not concern the application as such, but the claims, the submissions contained in the application and on which the court is called upon to rule. Venezuela understands this perfectly well because it has written that its preliminary exception is, and I quote, "is pertinent to the extent that the court has assumed its jurisdiction on one point, the validity of the arbitration award", Professor Palketti has repeated this, and Mr Reichler will come back to it. Furthermore, and more fundamentally, the monetary gold principle does concern the court's jurisdiction in two respects. First, the underlying raison d'etre that justifies this principle is profoundly jurisdictional. It holds, and Mr Reichler will also come back to this point, it holds in the absence of consent of a third state to the court's jurisdiction. As I emphasise and as Professor Sands will explain, this issue cannot be analysed without taking into consideration the basis of your jurisdiction, which is Article IV of the Geneva Agreement to which the UK has consented. On the other hand, when it is upheld, the objection based on the monetary gold principle leads the court not simply to decline the exercise of its competence but of its jurisdiction, but to have to refrain from exercising it even if it were to exist elsewhere. And Professor Zimmerman was right in mentioning the Croatia versus Serbia case and the judgment in which the court stated that objection to inadmissibility amounts to the assertion that there is a legal reason due to which, even if the court does have jurisdiction, it should refuse to hear the case, or more commonly, a specific application relating to it, end of quote. As to objections of inadmissibility, the the conditional tense "should" is important and is present in the English version of the judgment. The word "should decline" I mentioned. And it is also used in the judgment of the Plattform's case mentioned in this paragraph projected on your screen yesterday by Professor Zimmerman. And I quote, "There are reasons why the Court should not proceed to an examination of the merits", unquote. My colleague was right in projecting the terms of the judgment in the monetary gold case by which the Court emphasized that it cannot exercise this jurisdiction.
On the other hand, what Professor Zimmerman failed to do is to contrast the conditional, which should be used when speaking of admissibility, with the imperative should be used when the objection raised as a result of monetary gold is upheld. Then, the Court has no leeway. It must decline to exercise this jurisdiction. Why? Because the question of the consent of a third party is a question of jurisdiction which is governed by the statute. This is not the case for an admissibility objection. Furthermore, the objection based on the monetary gold principle is not mentioned by the Court among the examples of admissibility objections that are mentioned in the judgment Croatia versus Serbia that Professor Zimmerman has invoked, nor is it mentioned in the list of admissibility objections can be found in the most classical of commentaries on the statute of the Court or in the writings of particularly knowledgeable writers. Furthermore, an admissibility objection can often be corrected by the author of the act, as is the case, for instance, when domestic appeals have not been exhausted. This is not so for the jurisdictional objection that flows from the monetary gold principle. Members of the Court, your jurisprudence is crystal clear as to the exercise of jurisdiction. It is either binding or you decline to exercise jurisdiction, which distinguishes the objection deduced from monetary gold from an admissibility objection. And your jurisprudence is also very clear as to the fact that the legal effect of such an objection is that it does not render the application instituting the proceedings inadmissible. In the monetary gold case, the Italian government had, and I quote, "requested the Court to adjudicate on the preliminary question of its jurisdiction to deal with the merits of the claim. It was not a question of the admissibility of the application but of the preliminary question of the jurisdiction of the Court to entertain one of the submissions contained in the application." On the question of jurisdiction, the Court, and I quote, "said", or "finds" that the jurisdiction conferred upon it by the common agreement of the parties does not, in the absence of the consent of Albania, authorize it to adjudicate upon the first submission in the application of the Italian government", end of quote. So the absence of consent by Albania is a question of jurisdiction, which therefore restricts it. And the effect is that the Court cannot exercise its jurisdiction in the case of Eastern Timor, the only other case in which the Court chose to apply the monetary gold principle. Australia claimed...
...which bars the adjudication of the legal responsibility of Indonesia without its agreement.
In its countermeasures rejoinder, Australia deduced that, and I quote,
"lacks jurisdiction to decide on the Portuguese claims or the claims are inadmissible."
The question of the admissibility of the claims contained in the Portuguese application had been put forward by Australia only as a subsidiary matter, it being understood that the question of the absent third party to the proceedings raised above all a question of jurisdiction that had to do with the lack of consent of the third party. And it is on this last and only aspect that Court identified the nature and the legal effect of the objection that had been raised by Australia. The Court began, as you know, by recalling, and I quote, that one of the fundamental principles of its statute is that it cannot decide a dispute between states without the consent of those states to its jurisdiction. In other words, just as with monetary gold, the Court examined the Australian objection in light of the cardinal principle of consent, which determines its jurisdiction, without ruling on admissibility. And in accordance with his prior jurisprudence, the Court thus established this objection as revolving around the question of its jurisdiction. And it did this both because of its very nature as well as because of its effect. In the operative part of his judgment, the Court says that it finds that it cannot, in the present case, exercise the jurisdiction conferred upon it. classifying the monetary gold principle as an admissibly objection to the application instituting proceedings has never been upheld by the Court. Furthermore, as I stressed, this doctrine contains far more nuance than my colleague implied. And the objection deduced from this principle regards the limit to the jurisdiction of the Court in such way that it is...
...whether the problem should be classified as an admissibility issue.
And here, I am quoting only one of several well-known authors. In any event, the question that you're called upon to rule is not about doctrine and it does not concern the label that one might put on this objection because for the purposes of admissibility of the objection raised by Venezuela at this stage and given the specific procedural context of this case, the only thing that matters is to know whether this objection could have and should have been raised in accordance with the 2012 order given what this last one imposed upon the parties that I just recalled. In fact, members of the Court, Venezuela recognizes that the monetary gold principle does concern the question of the Court's jurisdiction in the meaning of the 2018 order. Venezuela writes the following in paragraph 27 of its preliminary objections.
The Court, taken into account this fundamental principle according to which the Court cannot decide a dispute between states without the consent of those states to its jurisdiction, the judgment of December 18, 2020 would have been different.
In other words, Venezuela recognized that its exception did have to do with the procedural phase that had begun with the order in 2018 and completed by the judgment that it contests. So Venezuela full well understands that it could have and should have raised in connection with the order the objection that it has raised today. Had it done so, you then would have undoubtedly accepted to entertain this argument during the proceedings that led to your judgment of 18 December 2020 because, as I recall, the question of the UK's consent to have the Court rule on the validity of the award does come under Article IV of the Geneva Agreement, to which the United Kingdom consented and is a party. You would not have objected considering that this argument could not be entertained for the dubious ground or on the dubious grounds that the order had not specifically aimed questions of admissibility of the application. As I recall, the monetary gold objection has as an effect that the Court cannot exercise its jurisdiction for grounds that have to do with a key principle of consent and not because the application is per se flawed. So this objection does have to do with the Court's jurisdiction and this, by virtue, in fact, of Article IV of the Geneva Agreement, to which the UK is a party. So with the 2018 order, Venezuela could have raised the argument that was submitted to you on June 7, 2022 and that we are discussing. And since the very terms of the order called upon the parties to present all of their legal and factual grounds regarding the question of the Court's jurisdiction, Venezuela should have raised this argument in accordance with the order. Madam President, members of the Court, allow me now to come to the last part of my demonstration. The inadmissibility of Venezuela's objection can be deduced from the effect of the 2018 order given the general system governing incident proceedings of preliminary objections. As you know, this system comes currently under Article 79, 79 bis and 79 ter of the rules, which clarify the provisions that were contained in the former Article 79, which had been in force until October 20 of 2019. Preliminary objections raised by Venezuela in June 2022 are therefore governed by the new Article 79 bis of the rules, just as the respondent has explicitly admitted, knowing that the order of June 19, 2018 was adopted on the basis of a former Article 79, paragraph 2, which essentially and subsequently is now new Article 79, art. 1. Article 79 bis now explicitly subordinates the presentation of any preliminary objection by the respondent to the fact, and I quote, "The Court has not taken any decision under Article 79", that is to say, to the fact "The Court has not decided propriamotu", and I'm quoting again, "that questions concerning jurisdiction or the admissibility of the application shall be determined separately", end of quote. In other words, if the Court orders the parties to set out separately their grounds concerning all questions of jurisdiction or admissibility that they're raising propriamotu, the respondent can no longer raise under Article 79 bis an objection that it could have and therefore should have raised in connection with the question or questions raised by the Court. The objective of the South Administration of Justice, which is the goal of the order adopted by the Court under Article 79, paragraph 1, would be entirely flouted if notwithstanding this order governing the conduct of the trial that respondent could simply ignore it while maintaining the ability to raise preliminary objections under the order whereby the Court invited the parties to give full arguments on all aspects of the question so that it could judge in the form of a judgment prior to any examination of the merits. Even if this was not expressly provided by the rules in this former wording, this elementary logic already governed the relationship between the power of the Court derived from Article 79, former Article 79, paragraph 2, and the rights of the respondent under paragraph 1 of the same article, again, in its former version. The point is moot, however, because Venezuela is now claiming to act under the new Article 79 bis. Venezuela, however, maintains that it could not have raised these preliminary objections before the Court held that it did have jurisdiction to entertain the controversy on the validity of the award because it would only have been then that the reasons for its objection would have appeared. With all the respect due to my colleagues, this argument simply makes no sense. It is contradicted by paragraph 27 of the preliminary objections of Venezuela that I just showed a few minutes ago. Furthermore, from the beginning of this dispute, the three states that are bound by the Geneva Agreement know full well that Venezuela has recriminations against a legal text that Guyana inherited but to which it did not participate simply because it did not exist in the 19th century. The subject matter, the goal of the Geneva Agreement, is the settlement of the dispute borne from the alleged nullity of the award. It was sufficient for Venezuela to read this agreement to see that its preliminary objection deduced from the monetary gold principle involved, given the very nature of this principle and given the grounds for jurisdiction vote by Guyana, that is to say, Article IV of the Geneva Agreement, once again, I repeat this, to which the UK was a party, that this objection raised a question of jurisdiction that should have and could have been presented to the Court in accordance with the 2018 order. Your 2020 judgment did not reveal anything that was not already perfectly patent. Madam President, members of the Court, I conclude that the preliminary objections raised on June 7, 2022 by Venezuela must be declared inadmissible because they come under, in every regard, the question of the Court's jurisdiction, a question regarding which Venezuela had to present all legal and factual grounds in accordance with the order of 19th of June 2018. I'd like to thank the Court for your very kind attention. Madam President, may I ask you now to call forward Madam Christina Berry?
I thank Professor D'Argent, and I now invite Ms. Christina Berry to address the Court. You have the floor, Madam.
Madam President, it is a great honor to appear before you today for the first time in this great Hall of Justice. And it is a particular privilege for me to do so on behalf of Guyana, where several generations of my family were born. You have already heard from Professor D'Argent on why Venezuela's admissibility objection based on monetary gold is necessarily an objection that addresses the Court's jurisdiction. My presentation will show that such objections are consequently barred by the res judicata effects of the Court's judgment of 18 December 2020. Madam President, what Venezuela asks the Court to do by way of its preliminary objections is nothing less than to undo its judgment. Venezuela is not bashful in challenging that judgment, stating at paragraph 19 of the preliminary objections that the Court lacks jurisdiction to entertain Guyana's application. You heard that again yesterday from Professor Zimmerman, who said that the December 2020 judgment was decided wrongly and that the Court also lacks jurisdiction to entertain the case. In its preliminary objections, Venezuela further submits that even if the Court were to have jurisdiction, Guyana's application would be then inadmissible on the basis of the terms of the said judgment. The critical words here are "on the basis of the terms of the said judgment". So, according to Venezuela, the Court's judgment itself gives rise to its preliminary objections. This point is repeated at paragraphs 14 and 20 of the same document. This reasoning is not credible, but Venezuela finds itself in a serious bind. As Professor D'Argent just explained, Venezuela's preliminary objections are essentially jurisdictional and therefore late under Article 79 bis of the rules. The only way Venezuela can find around this is to argue that the grounds for objections did not exist prior to the judgment, but arose from it. Even if, quad non, this were a way to avoid the strictures of Article 79 bis, it puts Venezuela in direct conflict with the judgment itself and with its res judicata effects. I need not explain to the Court the primacy of the res judicata principle, which applies to all judgments of the Court. It is enshrined in the statute under Articles 59 and 60 and in the Court's jurisprudence, which has long recognized judgments as final and without appeal. Tellingly, Venezuela's written submissions only makes passing reference to this principle, stating that the Court's judgment on jurisdiction suffers from legitimation problems, which cannot be covered under the cloak of res judicata. Full stop. And it was barely mentioned yesterday by Professor Zimmerman. Venezuela therefore concedes the res judicata effect of the December 2020 judgment but only makes conclusory statements in justifying how its objections can possibly survive under this principle. The Bosnia genocide case is, however, instructive in this regard. There, the Court dealt with an ex post attempt by Serbia to reopen its judgment upholding its jurisdiction. The Court decided, in accordance with Article 36, paragraph 6 of the statute, and once a fine... a finding in favor of jurisdiction has been pronounced with the force of res judicata, it is not open to question or reexamination, except by way of revision under Article 61 of the statute. The court went on to provide the rationale for its decision, elucidating the two main purposes of res judicata. It stated, “This result is required by the nature of the judicial function,” that is, “the finality of awards, and the universally recognized need for its stability of legal relations.” Surely Venezuela’s objection would, in the words of the court, deprive a litigant, in this case, Guyana, of the benefit of a judgment it has already obtained, which must in general be seen as a breach of the principles governing the legal settlement of disputes. There is no doubt that the judgment of 18 December 2020 is res judicata, such that what the court decided can only be called into question under the very strict conditions of an application for revision. To recall, revision can only be requested when it is based upon the discovery of some fact of a decisive nature that was unknown to the court and the party claiming revision of the judgment. But these conditions are not at all fulfilled. That is why Venezuela did not pursue recourse on this basis, but instead constructed its request under Article 79 bis of the rules, hoping to sidestep the limited nature of the actions that can be taken with respect to a final decision of the court. As you heard yesterday, Venezuela maintains that its monetary gold objection does not offend your judgment because, allegedly, the court did not decide on the immisibility of the application. But as Professor Darjean has ably shown you, this objection is profoundly jurisdictional. But even if such objection were to concern the immisibility of Guyana’s application initiating these proceedings, quad non, your judgment surely ruled with res judicata force on its effect. In the operative clause of the judgment, the court held it has jurisdiction to entertain the application insofar as it concerns the validity of the arbitral award of 3 October 1899 and the related question of the definitive settlement of the boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. But the court is not limited to simply the judgment’s operative clauses. As the court noted in Nicaragua v. Colombia, for the application of res judicata, it is also necessary to ascertain the content of the decision, the finality of which is to be guaranteed. Here, we must look to paragraph 121 of the judgment, which states that the court was validly seized of the dispute between the parties by way of the application of Guyana. In Guyana’s submission, this holding is inseparable from the operative part of the judgment and has res judicata force. Guyana acknowledges that this determination is on the validity of your seizing by the application and does not directly speak to the issue of immisibility of the application. But can it be seriously contended that the court doubted the immisibility of the application or even that it reserved the question when it decided not only it had been validly seized by Guyana’s application, but also when it affirmed its jurisdiction to entertain Of course it didn’t. The Bosnia v. Serbia case also bears mention again. Venezuela invoked this decision yesterday, acknowledging that res judicata attaches to any issues which have been decided or which are necessarily entailed in the decision of those issues. Guyana also finds this decision pertinent. That’s because Serbia attempted to make a similar argument to avoid the res judicata effect of the court’s 1996 decision on jurisdiction. The court had no difficulty concluding that its decision on subject matter jurisdiction under Article nine of the Genocide Convention was consistent in law and logic, with a determination that all the conditions relating to the state’s capacity to appear before it had been met. The same applies here. I conclude, Madam President, with a final observation. In its preliminary objections, Venezuela asks the court to terminate the ongoing proceeding. Notably, you did not hear that yesterday, or any mention for that matter of how the court should dispose of the December 2020 judgment should it accept Venezuela’s monetary gold argument. This is no small matter. The fact is, Madam President, not only is there no reason to grant this request, but it would be impossible to do so without violating the court’s statute. Effectively, by requesting the termination of the ongoing proceeding, Venezuela is asking you not to entertain Guyana’s application, which is precisely what the judgment decided to do. To put it differently, Venezuela asks for the exact opposite of what the court decided in its judgment. It is therefore impossible to grant Venezuela’s request without violating the res judicata effect of your judgment under Articles 59 and 60 of the statute and Article 94 of the Charter concerning compliance with decisions of the court. Guyana therefore respectfully submits that Venezuela’s objections are precluded and should be rejected by the court on this basis. Madam President, this brings me to the end of my presentation. I thank the court for its kind attention, and I ask that you now call upon Mr. Reichler to the podium. Thank you.
I thank Ms. Bahari, and I now invite Mr. Paul Reichler to address the court. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Madam President, members of the court, it is, as always, an honor for me to appear before you, and it is a special privilege for me to address you today on behalf of Guyana in a case that the agent has described as existential for his country. At stake in this case is the sanctity of Guyana’s longstanding international boundary with Venezuela and title to nearly three quarters of Guyana’s territory, which Venezuela seeks to appropriate for itself by disavowing and disregarding that boundary and the international arbitral award that established it. Before getting into the substance of my presentation, I would like to follow the agent of Guyana and thank the court for accommodating our request to postpone these hearings from their initial October date until now. As explained in the agent’s letter to the court, this request was made in part because my presence here in October could not be assured due to my recovery from surgery on my spinal column. As it turned out, I could not have appeared here in October. But I am fully recovered now, and I am especially grateful to the court for the extra month, which has made it possible for me to have the honor to appear before you today. Madam President, we are here because by means of its preliminary objections, Venezuela seeks to prevent the court from reaching the merits of this case and from confirming the validity of the arbitral award of 3 October 1899 and the lawfulness and permanence of the international boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. In Guyana’s submission, Venezuela’s objection to the exercise of the court’s jurisdiction in respect of these issues is completely unfounded, and the court should and must proceed to resolve them for the reasons given in Guyana’s written observations and for the reasons provided by my colleagues and myself this afternoon. Professor Darjean and Ms. Bahari have already given you sufficient reasons to dispose of Venezuela’s preliminary objections on procedural grounds. The fact that, due to its nature as a jurisdictional objection and its lateness, it is barred by the court’s rules, and the fact that the court’s jurisdiction to rule on Guyana’s claims has already been determined in its judgment of 18 December 2020, and it is now res judicata. It is my role to offer the court another equally dispositive basis for rejecting Venezuela’s objections, that, under the legal principle first established by the court in the monetary gold case and explained in its subsequent jurisprudence, the United Kingdom is not an indispensable party to these proceedings. Professor Tam said yesterday, in reference to monetary gold, that, quote, “The parties are agreed that this doctrine, if it applies, if it applies, precludes the court from exercising jurisdiction.” In Guyana’s submission, the doctrine does not apply and cannot be applied in this case. This is true for two reasons. First, the United Kingdom has no legal interests, no legal rights or obligations that would be affected by a judgment of the court on the merits of this case. And second, the United Kingdom has given its consent in Article four of the 1966 Geneva Agreement for the court to resolve this dispute between Guyana and Venezuela. I will address the first reason for rejecting Venezuela’s preliminary objections, the absence of any legal interests of the UK that would constitute the very subject matter of the judgment to be rendered by the court on Guyana’s claims. And Professor Sands will address the second reason, the presence of the UK’s consent to the adjudication of this dispute by the court. Madam President, there is a fundamental disagreement between the parties over when the principles established by the court in monetary gold apply. Professor Tam has set out Venezuela’s view. I will quote him directly so as not to inadvertently mischaracterize that view. Quote, “On the basis of this jurisprudence, Venezuela submits that this court must ask itself a simple question at the present stage: Would a judgment deciding on Guyana’s application imply an evaluation of the lawfulness of the conduct of another state which is not a party to the case, the United Kingdom? Or, in the words of the Croatian genocide case, would a judgment in this case rule upon the United Kingdom’s conduct without its consent? If the answer is in the affirmative, the court must decline to exercise jurisdiction. This is the test.” End of quote. With respect, this is not the test established in monetary gold or in the subsequent cases that interpreted and applied it. These, we submit, are not the right questions for the court to ask under its well-established jurisprudence. They are questions formulated by Venezuela for the purpose of producing the answers it wants. They are not consistent with the relevant case law, of which Professor Tam gave you only a very cursory description. In our view, it is worth a closer examination, beginning with the monetary gold case itself. The case came to the court following an arbitration that found that certain gold looted by German forces in Rome during World War II belonged to Albania. Italy claimed entitlement to the same gold based on an alleged international wrong Albania had committed against it. Italy’s claim thus required the court to determine whether Albania, which was not a party to the monetary gold case, had committed any international legal wrongs, subjecting it to liability to Italy, as the court explained. Quote, “In order, therefore, to determine whether Italy is entitled to receive the gold, it is necessary to determine whether Albania has committed any international wrong against Italy and whether she is under an obligation to pay compensation to her.” It was on this basis that the court concluded that it could not exercise jurisdiction because, quote, “in the present case, Albania’s legal interests would not only be affected by the decision, but would form the very subject matter of the decision.” This is the essence of the court’s ruling and the standard it set for future cases. For the court not to exercise its jurisdiction, there must be a need for it to determine whether an absent party’s legal interest would not only be affected by, but would form the very subject matter of the decision on the merits the court is called upon to make. In particular, would a judgment of the court directly affect the legal rights or obligations of an absent state, as in the case of Albania, that had not consented to its jurisdiction? The court returned to this issue and elaborated on the standard it set in monetary gold in the phosphates case, Nowru versus Australia. This is a case that Venezuela’s counsel managed to overlook in his discussion of the court’s jurisprudence, applying or interpreting monetary gold. There, the court rejected Australia’s argument that the case should be dismissed under the monetary gold standard on the ground that, as alleged by Australia, its legal interests were identical to those of the United Kingdom and New Zealand, and that any adjudication of its interests would inevitably affect the legal interests of the two absent states. The court explained that, quote, “In the present case, the interests of New Zealand and the United Kingdom do not constitute the very subject matter of the judgment to be rendered on the merits of Nowru’s application, and the situation is, in that respect, different from that with which the court had to deal in the monetary gold case.” The court’s decision to exercise jurisdiction did not mean that it found that the legal interests of New Zealand and the United Kingdom would be unaffected by the judgment Nowru was seeking. To the contrary, the court recognized that, quote, “A finding by the court regarding the existence or the content of the responsibility attributed to Australia by Nowru might well have implications for the legal situation of the two other states concerned.” End of quote. Perhaps Professor Tam’s bypassed the phosphates case because it conflicts with his thesis that all it takes for monetary gold to apply is for the court’s judgment to, quote, “imply an evaluation of an absent state’s conduct.” In the phosphates case, the court adopted a very different approach. It rejected Australia’s preliminary objection because, quote, “The interests of New Zealand and the United Kingdom do not constitute the very subject matter of the judgment to be rendered, because the judgment would not directly affect the legal rights or obligations of those states.” Three years later, the court again was called upon to interpret and apply its ruling in monetary gold in the East Timor case, Portugal v. Australia. Counsel for Venezuela cited this case, but he quoted very selectively from it. In its key passage, the court sustained Australia’s preliminary objection based on monetary gold because, in its words, quote, “In this case, the effects of the judgment requested by Portugal would amount to a determination that Indonesia’s entry into and continued presence in East Timor are unlawful, and that, as a consequence, it does not have the treaty-making power in matters relating to the continental shelf resources of East Timor.” in matters relating to the continental shelf resources of East Timor. Indonesia’s rights and obligations would thus constitute the very subject matter of such a judgment made in the absence of that state’s consent.” In this passage, as the court made clear, especially in the last sentence quoted, that an absent state’s legal interest will, quote, “constitute the very subject matter of the case when its judgment would directly affect the, quote, ‘rights and obligations’ of the absent state.” Even in upholding Australia’s objection, the court took care to reaffirm what it said in the Phosphates case: that Monetary Gold did not prevent it from exercising jurisdiction and issuing a judgment that might affect the legal interests of an absent state so long as that state’s interest did not constitute the very subject matter of the dispute. Quote, “The court emphasizes that it is not necessarily prevented from adjudicating when the judgment it is asked to give might affect the legal interests of a state which is not a party to the case.” The court reaffirmed this principle once again in its 1998 judgment in Cameroon v Nigeria. As you will recall, Nigeria objected to Cameroon’s request that the court establish the party’s boundary through Lake Chad on the ground that this would touch on the tri-point with Chad and thus affect the legal interests of an absent state in violation of Monetary Gold. The court rejected Nigeria’s objection on the now familiar ground that, quote, “It is not necessarily prevented from adjudicating when the judgment it is asked to give might affect the legal interests of a state which is not a party to the case,” end of quote. In that case, unlike the present one between Guyana and Venezuela, the absent state had an actual legal interest in a part of the international boundary that the court was called upon to draw. Nevertheless, the court ruled, quote, “The legal interests of Chad as a third state not party to the case do not constitute the very subject matter of the judgment to be rendered on the merits of Cameroon’s application,” end of quote. What this review of the relevant jurisprudence shows is that the court has declined to exercise jurisdiction under the Monetary Gold standard in only two cases. In both of them, Monetary Gold itself and East Timor, it found that it could not decide the case without directly affecting the legal rights or obligations of an absent third state—Albania in the first case, Indonesia in the second— and that the legal interests of the absent state thus constituted the very subject matter of the decision to be rendered. This, then, is the principle to be derived from Monetary Gold and its progeny. The court will not decline to exercise jurisdiction merely because the legal interests of an absent state might be affected or implicated or merely because its conduct may be, quote, “evaluated,” so long as the absent state’s legal interests do not constitute the very subject matter of the judgment to be rendered on the merits of the applicant state’s claims. Accordingly, the question for the court here, in contrast to the one Venezuela has proposed, is whether the legal interests of the United Kingdom, if any, form the very subject matter of the judgment the court would be required to render on Guyana’s claims, such that it would not be possible for the court to rule on those claims without directly affecting the legal rights or obligations of the UK. To answer this question: whether the legal interests of the UK constitute the very subject matter of the judgment the court has been called upon to render here, we need to consider what the very subject matter of the present dispute between Guyana and Venezuela is. Fortunately, this is a matter on which the parties agree. Venezuela asserts, and we concur, that the subject matter of this dispute is set forth in paragraph 137 of the court’s judgment of 18 December 2020. In it, the court concludes that it has jurisdiction to entertain Guyana’s claims concerning the validity of the 1899 award about the frontier between British Guyana and Venezuela and the related question of the definitive settlement of the dispute regarding the land boundary between the territories of the parties. To the same effect, in the first paragraph of the dispositive, the court, quote, “finds” that it has jurisdiction to entertain the application filed by the Cooperative Republic of Guyana on 29 March 2018 insofar as it concerns the validity of the arbitral award of 3 October 1899 and the related question of the definitive settlement of the land boundary dispute between the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. It is thus a matter of agreement between the parties that the subject matter of the judgment to be rendered by the court is the validity of the arbitral award of 3 October 1899 and the related question of the definitive settlement of the land boundary dispute between Guyana and Venezuela. In the circumstances, the task of the court in considering Venezuela’s preliminary objections under the Monetary Gold standard is to determine whether the United Kingdom has legal interests that would not only be affected by, but would form the very subject matter of a judgment of the court on the validity of the 1899 arbitral award and the related question of the definitive settlement of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. And this, then, leads us to the fundamental question at the heart of these proceedings: what legal interests, if any, does the United Kingdom have in the validity of the 1899 arbitral award or the definitive settlement of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela? And most importantly, if these legal interests exist, do they constitute the very subject matter of the dispute to be decided by the court? For Guyana, the answers to these questions are clear. The United Kingdom has no legal interests in the validity of the 1899 arbitral award or in the definitive settlement of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. It therefore has no legal interests that could constitute the very subject matter of this dispute. In issuing its judgment on the validity of the 1899 arbitral award or the definitive settlement of the land boundary, there are no legal rights or obligations of the United Kingdom that the court could possibly affect. There is thus no basis, taking due account of Monetary Gold and the subsequent jurisprudence, for the court to decline to exercise its jurisdiction in this case because of the absence of the United Kingdom, independently of whether the UK has consented to adjudication of these issues by Guyana and Venezuela, a matter that Professor Sands will address. Now, it might be helpful if we were to ask this question: Does the United Kingdom itself consider that it has legal interests that might be affected by a judgment on the merits in this case, such that it might be opposed to the exercise of the court’s jurisdiction on the issues that have been placed before it by Guyana? This is a question that Venezuela studiously avoided addressing yesterday. Perhaps they will give us their thoughts on it on Monday. If they do, they might wish to consider the following statements in which the UK joined with other states in welcoming the court’s judgment of 18 December 2020 and specifically the court’s decision to adjudicate Guyana’s claims on the validity of the 1899 award and the definitive settlement of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. This, for example, is from the communique issued by the Commonwealth heads of government at the conclusion of their meeting in Rwanda on 25 June 2022, at tab 2 of your folders. It was signed by all the heads, including the Prime Minister of the UK. Heads noted the decision made by the ICJ on 18 December 2020 that it has jurisdiction to entertain the application filed Guyana by Guyana on 29 March 2018, paving the way for the ICJ to consider the merits of the case concerning the arbitral award of 3 October 1899, Guyana v Venezuela. Heads reiterated their full support for the ongoing judicial process that is intended to bring a peaceful and definitive end to the longstanding controversy between the two countries. Now, it would be difficult to imagine a clearer statement of the United Kingdom’s position in favor of the court’s exercise of jurisdiction to determine the validity of the 1899 arbitral award and the related question of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. Plainly, the UK cannot be understood to harbor any concerns that in deciding these issues the court will affect its legal rights or obligations. On 14 September 2021, the concluding statement of the Commonwealth Ministerial Group on Guyana, which included the United Kingdom and is at tab 4 of your folders, contained this paragraph: “The group expressed its unwavering support for the judicial process underway before the International Court of Justice, chosen by the Secretary-General of the United Nations under the 1966 Geneva Agreement, and the group continues to encourage Venezuela to participate in the said process.” A similar statement was signed by the Foreign Minister of the UK and his counterparts from CARICOM and the Dominican Republic at the conclusion of the 10th UK CARICOM Caribbean Forum on 18 March 2021. The final communique at tab 3 of your folders included this paragraph: “Ministers welcomed the 18 December 2020 decision of the International Court of Justice that it has jurisdiction to entertain Guyana’s claim concerning the validity of the 1899 arbitral award which settled the land boundary between then-British Guyana and Venezuela.” These ministers plainly expected the court to proceed to rule on the validity of the 1899 award, and the United Kingdom was part of the consensus that the court should do so. These three statements are only the most recent of many official statements, signed or authored by the UK or its responsible ministers, supporting the court’s exercise of jurisdiction in this case or disavowing any British legal interests in the validity of the arbitral award or the course of the land boundary between Guyana and Venezuela. Professor Sands will consistently express the position that it no longer had any interest of a legal nature in the validity of the arbitral award or the course of the land boundary, and that these were matters that pertained exclusively to Guyana and Venezuela. Professor Sands will also show you that in the 1966 Geneva Agreement, the UK expressly consented that the dispute settlement process articulated in Article IV of that agreement would be pursued exclusively by Guyana and Venezuela without its participation through the final stage provided in the agreement: determination by the Secretary-General of the particular form of dispute settlement in which the two parties, Guyana and Venezuela, would engage, which included adjudication by the court. Indeed, it was on the basis of Article IV that the court determined that it has jurisdiction in this case. It is ironic, to say the least, that Venezuela purports to find ongoing British rights and obligations in the arbitral award and the international boundary that it established despite Britain’s repeated statements since 1966 that it has no such legal interest. It is ironic especially because Venezuela has long portrayed itself as a champion against European and North American colonialism and imperialism. Yet, in this case, it purports to find, even at this date, continuing legal interests of a former colonial power in an arbitral award, the sole purpose and effect of which was to determine the land boundary between its former colony, which became an independent state 56 years ago, and Venezuela. What are these purported legal interests, which the British are said to retain more than half a century after Guyana’s independence? And how does Venezuela support its argument that they constitute the very subject matter of this case? Madam President, I see we’re approaching 4:30. I have about 10 to 12 more minutes in this speech. I can either continue, if you like, or if the court can withstand the suspense of leaving this question unanswered for the moment, we can take the coffee break at your pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Reckler. Why don’t you just go ahead and finish, and then we’ll take a break after your
Thank you very much. What are these purported interests which the British are said to retain? Venezuela’s principal argument, expressed in its preliminary objections of 7 June 2022, is that the United Kingdom has interest in the arbitral award of 3 October 1899 simply because it was a party to that award. Yesterday, we heard a new argument in support of the preliminary objections, not included in Venezuela’s written submission, but advanced for the first time in these oral hearings: that Venezuela intends to argue, at the merits stage, that the award is invalid due to fraudulent conduct by the UK prior to and during the hearings before the arbitral tribunal in 1899. According to Venezuela, because of this contention, which it says it intends to advance, in determining whether the arbitral award is valid, the court will have to decide whether the UK engaged in unlawful conduct at the end of the 19th century. Of course, we have not arrived at the merits stage yet, although it might have appeared otherwise during much, if not most, of Venezuela’s argument yesterday. But let us suppose that we have been transported into the future, to the merits stage, and Venezuela has made these contentions about the unlawfulness of the UK’s conduct in and before 1899. Guyana does not accept Venezuela’s proposition that even then the court would be required to pass judgment on the lawfulness of the UK’s conduct in order to determine the validity of the arbitral award. But for present purposes and quad non, let us assume, as Venezuela would have it, that the court would have to decide on the lawfulness of the UK’s conduct in ruling on the validity of the arbitral award. Even under this assumption, we are still left with the unanswered question of how the legal interests of the UK would constitute the very subject matter of the judgment this called upon to render in this case. Specifically, what legal rights or obligations of the UK today would be affected by the court’s judgment on the issues over which it took jurisdiction in its judgment of 18 December 2020? The answer is none. And that is why Venezuela was unable to answer this question yesterday. The task fell to my friend, Professor Palchetti. In a telling admission, he acknowledged that the United Kingdom—this is our English translation— has no current interest in the question of the delimitation of the disputed territory. territory. He went on: “But, ladies and gentlemen, it does not matter that the United Kingdom has no interest in the disputed territory. It does not matter. It is not in relation to the delimitation of the land boundary that the United Kingdom is an indispensable party.” And he concluded: “I repeat, Venezuela does not claim that the United Kingdom has any interest in this territory today. The application of the monetary gold principle in this case has nothing to do with territorial delimitation as such.” From these remarkable statements, two conclusions can be drawn. First, Venezuela does not challenge the exercise Venezuela effectively admits that the UK has no legal interest in an arbitral award whose sole purpose and effect was to delimit that boundary. Indeed, at paragraph 137 of the judgment of 18 December 2020, as we have seen, the court itself refers to, quote, “the validity of the 1899 award about the frontier between British Guyana and Venezuela.” End of quote. Professor Palchetti was unable to identify any British interest that would be affected by the court’s judgment on the validity of the award. Instead, he spoke only of abstract, quote, “legal consequences” for the UK if the award were declared invalid. But he declined to identify any of them specifically. Quote, “At this stage, it is immaterial to establish the precise consequences that may flow from the United Kingdom’s fraudulent conduct.” With respect, we beg to differ. It is for Venezuela, in justifying its preliminary objections, to identify specifically what the consequences would be for Britain’s legal interests if the court were to invalidate the arbitral award on the basis of its alleged unlawful conduct during the 1899 arbitral proceedings. But Professor Palchetti could not do so. All he could do was plead. But one cannot pretend that they don’t exist, nor, we would add, can one pretend that they do exist. And if those legal interests do exist, why does Venezuela have such difficulty identifying them with any degree of specificity? In the end, Professor Palchetti could only come up with this: “If the court determines that the United Kingdom is responsible for fraudulent conduct, the consequence is not only that the arbitral award has no force, as Guyana claims, Venezuela will also have the right to invoke the application of the consequences provided for in Article 69 of the Vienna Convention. Venezuela shall have the right to request the restoration of the situation prior to the award. This is hopelessly inadequate to meet the monetary gold test. The consequences of theoretical invalidation of the award and a restoration of the situation prior to the award would be, in Venezuela’s view, the erasure of the international boundary between Guyana and Venezuela and a return to the status quo ante, when the boundary was undetermined and the territory was disputed. But we have to ask: How could these so-called consequences affect Britain’s legal interests? When, as you have just seen, Venezuela admits expressly that, quote, “the United Kingdom has no interest in the disputed territory.” End of quote. Nor in, quote, “the delimitation of the disputed territory.” End of quote. How could the UK’s legal interests constitute the very subject matter of the judgment to be rendered by the court on the validity of the 1899 arbitral when the UK has no legal interest in whether that award is valid or not? Venezuela’s argument might have made sense in 1899, but it is entirely unsupportable now. The sole purpose of the 1899 arbitration was to fix the international boundary between British Guyana and Venezuela. This is set out in Article I of the 1897 Treaty of Washington, by which the United Kingdom and Venezuela agreed upon and set the terms for arbitration of this question. An arbitral tribunal shall be immediately appointed to determine the boundary line between the colony of British Guyana and the United States of Venezuela. It was this mandate, and only this mandate, that the arbitral tribunal carried out, as reflected in the sixth operative paragraph of its 1899 award. Now, we, the und signed arbitrators, do hereby make and publish our decision, determination, and award of, upon and concerning, the questions submitted to us by the said treaty of arbitration, finally decide, award, and determine that the boundary line between the colony of British Guyana and the United States of Venezuela, and then the award goes on to describe in excruciating detail that boundary line. To be sure, between 1899 and 1966, when British Guyana remained a colony of the United Kingdom, the colonial power maintained a legal interest in the international boundary between its colony and Venezuela that was fixed by the arbitral tribunal. But that legal interest, like all legal rights of the United Kingdom in the colony of British Guyana, came to a complete and definitive end upon the decolonization of Guyana and its birth as an independent state sovereign over its own national territory on 26 May 1966. After that date, as a matter of decolonization law, the United Kingdom did not have and could not have any legal interests, any legal rights or obligations, in Guyana’s sovereign territory or in the international boundaries that defined it. To conclude, for the reasons I have given, the United Kingdom, after 26 May 1966, did not and could not have any interest in the validity of an arbitral award whose sole purpose and effect was to define the international boundary of its former colony with Venezuela. Whatever the court might decide on this question at the merits phase of the case, the legal rights and obligations of the United Kingdom will be unaffected because it has no rights or obligations that could be affected, either by a decision upholding the award or one declaring it null and void. Only the legal interests of Guyana and Venezuela will be affected, however the court rules on this issue. As a result, the monetary gold principle cannot apply to the present case, and Venezuela’s preliminary objections must be rejected by the court. Madam President, members of the court, this concludes my presentation this afternoon. I thank you for your kind courtesy and patient attention, and after the coffee break, I ask you to please call Professor Sands to the podium.
I thank Mr. Reichler. Before I give the speaker the floor, the court will indeed observe a coffee break of 10 minutes. The sitting is adjourned.